On the ZBA meeting for June 13, 2024. This meeting is being recorded. If any other person present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. In accordance with Mass General Law 30 A S S 20 G, no person shall address a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all person shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after fair warning from the chair, person continue to disrupt the meeting, the chair may order person to withdraw from the meeting. And if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize the constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting.
I'm reporting.
The application of 71 Montague City Road LLC for property located at 59 Montague City Road, assessors tax assessors map four, thought 6.1, which is located in the urban residential RA zoning district for notification on the special permit approved on April 13, 2023, pursuant to sections 200 dash 6.1, 200 dash 8.3, and 200 dash 8.4 of the zoning ordinance specifically to modify conditions number four. What was that?
Mark, I mean, Mark. Mark Zachary, Zachary, co-owners of the property last April.
You should identify yourself.
Yes.
Okay. Mark Zachary.
No.
Peter, you're supposed to say he's sitting on the. That's what they were trying to say.
Remember the board, come when?
Mark Maloney.
Debbie Jokes.
Eric Green.
And Peebles.
Okay. So most of you, I think, were present last April 2023, when we presented this property in front of the board, an exception to an RA zoning to allow a professional office space, governmental agency, the USDA, to occupy roughly 3,600 square feet, 4,400 square foot, priorly, I mean, a school, a building priorly used for this actual. It was awarded. They took a whole year to fit it out and to move them in. They're happy. Space looks great. I put a significant amount of money into the property and the grounds. And I think it's a successful project by most standards. But there was always a small portion. We had hoped that the USDA would have taken the entire thing, but it was an existing building. They had a federal mandate. So as much as they wanted to take the whole building, there was a portion left over. It's a very small portion. It's about 10, 10% of the plan. And we, you know, during, during the past, the prior approval, there was a stipulation that a new tenant or change of tenancy, we would come back to you. And our position is that for this small space, we have every intention and we are highly motivated to find a tenant tenants that fit with our anchor tenant, that wouldn't, you know, that are compatible, that everyone's going to be, you know, a like, a like-minded tenant. And we would never jeopardize that, of course. But the burden of coming back, these small spaces are typically attractive to single professionals, the present tenant that we have interested, or a pair of professionals in a similar therapy profession. But they don't have long horizons. They tend to sign shorter leases, right? They're, you know, basically, you know, individual practitioners. They don't often have like long windows where they're looking ahead, right? So something goes wrong with their present office space, and then they need to make a, make a, make a, make a transfer. It's a little burdensome. I mean, we feel that it's a little burdensome to have to come back and jeopardize, you know, a potential tenant. And there's a cost to coming before you guys. That's not insignificant. And I just wanted to give you, you know, a little bit more of a perspective. Like this is the, that's the entire floor. The 4,400 square feet, the area hatched in red is the, you know, it's, it's a rentable square feet, square footage of 520. But that includes a common restroom, on the campus spaces. So it's really more like 460, you know, 10, 10% of this whole plan. We, we, you know, as I said, the prospective tenants are once licensed massage therapist. The other one is also a therapist, small practice. They're interested in a two-year lease. It's not a big dollar, you know? Honestly, it's a really lovely little suite. And it's been totally renovated and brought up to code and investment on our part. But it's, it's not a giant generator. I mean, this building really, really wouldn't work if we had little, little tenants like, like this. Honestly, I mean, we couldn't have afforded to put the investment that we put into this project. You know, the number of years of the planning. So, you know, our, our proposal to you would be that we'd like number, this item four, to be reworded to allow us a little bit more flexibility. We're, we're always interested in professional. I mean, we're, we're not going to have someone that's doing some kind of a repair business or, and Montague City Road is, is a really a kind of a next, a mixed-use road. There is what for this town is heavy industry on the other side. On this side, it's, it's still a mix, but it would be like Kevin's, you know, auto repair. That's, that's never going to, that type of business is never going to go there. It's always going to be either an accountant, a lawyer, a therapist, some single professional, an architect that, you know, someone that wants a space remote from home. But, and, and, you know, that has the amenities of parking and grounds that are well maintained. So, yeah, that, that's our proposal. That we'd like you guys to reconsider the wording of.
Of item four.
Yeah. And, and the USDA is, is, they're in there for 10 years. And, and they could be, and they could be there for longer than that. That's our hope. I mean, they seem quite happy. And of course, things, things change. Can't guarantee anything longer than 10 years. But that's, that's, that's pretty good. That's good then. And these current tenants, I mean, prospective tenants will likely be there for longer than two years. But we don't know that either.
But for us, the process of, you know, going from, you know, the process works where someone calls.
That's just a.
Looking for a space. For us to say that space is available, but it's not. So you can't guarantee.
Yeah. Okay. We can't, you know, we can't really lock in a lease. And then you've got to wait two months because we just missed my food line. It's tough. I mean, I don't think we're going to lose these guys if there's a favorable decision this time. But to go back years from now and maybe the market's not as strong. You know, it's, it's just tough. And just to say, oh, you have to take 10% of your property offline for a good portion of any given period, just because you gotta go through this approval process. Is, you know, it's not big extra money, but it does, it helps make.
Fortunately, to the rent. This way.
Oh, yeah.
That office space.
Yeah.
When we stipulated the first, was it for this space being defined as professional office space or administrative space?
Professional office space.
Professional office space.
A business category.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you're proposing that this would be the same.
Same.
That same category.
Yeah. And it's all been, I mean, it went through the same building department approval process. And, you know, in terms of being brought up to code and, you know, everything is modernized. In addition, we, we went over and above the code. Windows and spray foam walls and et cetera, et cetera.
Well, I went by there a couple of times and certainly there appears to be. This has no impact on parking.
No.
It's good. There was very few cars parked in lots on.
Yeah. USDA, they required quite a few parking. But, and they could add a bunch of staff and, you know, whatever. But it's a shared parking lot and.
They do have evening events too, so that. They wanted, they wanted some of the parking for evening events. Very rarely, but.
Well, yeah, and they have fleet vehicles, but there, there's ample.
Yeah, Mark has a question. Yeah. In terms of the ask around these conditions, are you open to the notion of keeping the condition that's connected to the USDA with their 10-year lease for that square footage? So that it's really more just freeing you up for that smaller office suite? To give a little more flexibility there. But that in 10 years, that entire space still needs to kind of be reviewed in terms of what you're doing with the future tenants? That there's some sense of control over how many businesses are going into that space or whatnot? Would you be open to just a relaxation of this suite?
Yeah. I think it's really, it's not so much the language that says any change of tenant other than the USDA, because that would be a major change to the constitution of this building. Right? It got become a bunch of smaller offices. It could become another large office, whatever. Or any additional tenant for the office fit out is the part that we have a little bit of problem.
Yeah.
If the USDA after 10 years say, nah, we're gonna, we're gonna go to somewhere later or whatever. I don't know. Or, yeah.
We would have some notice.
We would have, we would have sufficient notice. We would.
Yeah. Have some new plan.
And, and, and marketing a space that large would either be a multi-tenancy. And then we'd say, listen, we can't find a tenant this large in Greenfield with this, with these current conditions 10 years from now, who knows, right?
Yeah.
But we, we think there's a big market for, you know, whatever.
Right.
How much space is that? Would you guys be okay with that? Just because the systems are still new, you know? And the fit out was substantial.
Substantial.
Could it be worded as anything other than office? Would you guys be open to?
Professional office.
Yeah, professional. I'm not sure how that would change, whether it was the.
You're just interested in having required zone board appeal approval. But you can at your discretion bring somebody in there, but I'll spend the money come before us.
That would be ideal, given the space is, is built out as, as office space.
It exceed the parking required by zone for a commercial office, office space. I mean, that, I think, would be our, 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 our first ask would be to remove the the tail end of that, of that number four.
I, I, I could speak for Dave, I guess, but I'm just looking at what's, what would be commercial space. I mean, I'm just looking at, we're not going to look at putting a photocopying occupancy. I mean, I think the intent was to have it be professional space.
Yeah, it really only works well for that. I mean, honestly, because you are a little bit removed from the road. You know, it's not like a big signage thing where you're traveling by and you say, I gotta pull in and whatever. It's services, but it's more professional services. By, by appointments or at least know where you're going. It's not the, the dry, dry cleaners or that, that type of, of a business.
Mr. Chairman, is there any correspondence for this?
I haven't.
It's good. Yeah.
Correspondence received from engineering superintendent. No comments or issues with the proposed request from the Department of Planning and Development. No issues or comments with the proposed request. And that is it.
Just looking at the language to find a way to accommodate what you're asking for. Yet still provide some restrictive language that, as you come back, will keep us abreast of what's going on.
I think that for me, like that, that's the crux of kind of, yes, professional office space across the board. But the USDA is one single tenant compared to the potential without any restrictions to have several more tenants there in the future with no control or say over what that looks like. And for me, I think that's the rub. So on one level, the office space piece, like that addresses one concern. But I think that if we're talking about the potential to jump from two to three tenants, you know, I mean, I appreciate there's more people than that coming and going. Yeah. But there is a reality of there's a limit of the number of tenants within that office space. And if that could kind of expand with no notice or no level of control, I think for me, that, that feels like the rub. And so I appreciate that that's not anything that's going to happen in the near future. And, and, right? And that their lease could go another 10 years or whatever the case may be. But I guess for me, I feel like they're, I'm not sure exactly how to address that piece of it. But I would feel more comfortable if there was some kind of limit still placed on that larger space that now has one tenant, that it couldn't be kind of just divided. Now this is an office suite. Right? Like, you know what I mean? Like the Haber and Building on Federal is, this is just, it's tons of different people, all of whom are renting a single space from us. That just feels like it could be a different side in terms of coming and going and how the space is being used.
Yeah.
Even if it is.
It's a, yeah, it's a slightly different, I guess it's a different vibe. But you're, you still have a maximum occupancy. Right? I mean, there's, I do square foot per, per, per person by code. And as long as you, you're staying in the business occupancy, you know, the USDA is limited in terms of their occupancy, the number of people that can house in that, in their space. And if it was broken up into multiple offices, it'd be the same, unless the building code.
Yeah.
Changes. So traffic wise, I think they would, they would be similar.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'm actually just kind of projecting your administrative overhead as landlords.
No, Mark, I mean, you make, make some very valid points. I actually have some things that I want to talk about. I wasn't sure if we're gonna finish. I wasn't sure if we were gonna finish this portion. I wasn't sure if we were finished with this portion. And then if there's any public.
We're still working on this portion.
Okay. I don't actually have any additional questions for them at this time. But I do have things to discuss amongst ourselves when we get together. But I, I understand your concern. Well, I guess I'll just, I'll just say it now since I'm talking out, just keep talking. You know, we've had some things recently that have come before us in regards to be not specific or clear enough in our language. So I think your concerns are very valid. And that's the thing that I would want to discuss. I, I, I think this is a perfectly reasonable request. I have no.
Oh, yeah.
You know, as a concept, I have no problems with it. I just want to make sure we get it as close to right as we can, we can realistically get. That allows them to do what they need to do. But, yeah. Future proof us.
Yeah.
Well, I think I've closed our portion of meeting and opened up to the public at this point. We'll follow up. I mean, we're, we're going to go back to discuss how.
Absolutely, yeah.
How we come up with an answer to your request. But I think we just made great public.
Yeah. I mean, I think for us, professional office is kind of, it really, that's all we're asking for beyond that.
We're not even cut.
But say, say in seven years, you decide to sell this property, right? We want to make sure that, and they're professional offices or they want to buy something that the USDA is occupying. This could put, it could devalue the property. Just because there's a limitation that the buyer has no control over. That make.
Is he making one for the public?
Is there anybody there, Mr.?
Oh, yeah. John? Bottom of the.
Nobody has their hand raised. I'm not sure if they want to speak.
We'll close the public comment. Well, it's the deliberation part. I guess a question I have there. And do we have a similar circumstance in many other locations in Greenfield similar to this in terms of having someone in a peri district? That we've kind of provided kind of this sort of requirement to? Because I'm looking at, trying to find a way to write language that we provide control that give them the flexibility to walk market space.
That thing's coming to mind in terms of non-conforming uses and structures. It's usually minor stuff. I don't recall anything allowing office space or like, we think. I'd have to go back to directions. Nothing comes to mind immediately on that.
It's a, it's a little, it's unusual. I mean, it would be an unusual circumstance.
Request for expanding, changing or altering non-conform uses all the time. But it usually has to do with not being on the lot area as it meant or frontage or setback, something like that. This type of thing is rare, but it has happened in the past. I'd have to look up specifically what occurred.
I'm looking at the language, any change of tenant other than USDA or any additional credit for office space shall require some board of appeals approval. So we're really looking to rewrite that requirement. That's what you're asking for is to take that. I guess more.
Yeah.
And I, I, I'll, I'll throw out a suggestion. Feel free to, you know, any future use of this space shall be for professional office or professional usage only.
That way you wouldn't have something for us again.
And do we want, do we want a set of time stipulation? Come back to this ZBA, back to this board for review? We, right now, it's 10 years for USDA that you better. And if they leave, then you're going to be marketing a space to fill it with whoever you can rent it to.
Yeah.
Engineer, attorney, whoever. Makes sense? Try just looking for whatever suggestions in terms of taking this language out and putting something in that stipulates that we still want to monitor what they're doing, but not restrict them to come back every time they decide to re-rent the space, but they have to come before else.
Do we? Is office space a professional use defined within the zoning ordinance? Or is that just based on our general understanding? Because here's where I'm coming from. After, after the past six months, feeling a little gun shy about the super liquid permissions. Because it just feels like too much is coming back where we've just been historically lax. And now we're paying the price. So for me, I guess my question is, what if a sound mixing studio is considered an office? Or just professional use? And now there's kind of like, you know, a recording studio down in this space. And what does that mean for the tenants? I, I just, I don't. I appreciate the spirit of kind of like, yeah, man, just office space. But what does that mean? If we don't have a fair collective definition for that.
Professional.
Offices can be loud. Offices can have smells. Offices can be annoying. So I mean, I just don't. If the ordinance doesn't define it, my concern would be after like I haven't understanding of what we're talking about. We're roughly working eight to six. Biotically, cleanly, probably computed looking for right now. I don't know that that's necessarily the case. And frankly, if you guys had a great opportunity, I'm sure it might not be to your advantage to interpret it that way. But you would have the ability kind of, well, let's see what it is. And, and then we would be dealing with the special meetings that are happening from the I. No. So that's kind of my completely supportive conceptually. But I am just kind of like, what's the language that we need to do to just keep this back? Where everyone gets what they want.
I think zoning does attempt to make definitions of professional office, professional office space.
Yeah, because it's ours.
Greenfield zoning.
We have looked at the definition section of the ordinance. Do you not see a definition for professional office or use?
Business, it just falls under business.
So if it's not defined in the zoning ordinance, typically you go to the definition in a, in a dictionary, I mean, yeah, dictionary. Basically, so whatever that says is, is the definition for the Greenfield law.
I mean, I think you also have to consider the context of this, of this building. We have Temple Woods on one side as a neighbor. We have another building that we, that's on our, on our right. And then we have another building that we own on our left. And then we have city property on our, you know, to the other side. And then we have a recycling plant across. I don't think the sound studio is.
It's like, probably not going to complain about.
They're not going to.
Joe Garrett at the cheap side rich.
Well, I said recycling.
That space residential?
Glossing.
Your, your property, is any of that residential use?
Yes, they're. Both family. I mean, there's a distance of, they're roughly 150 feet between buildings. Not a congested site.
Right. But what we want to avoid is like, you know, somebody going in there and saying, okay, they're going to rent out the office space and they're just going to use it to do packaging of something. And, you know, putting packages together. And that involves like, hey, this is a great space for us. Let's add in, you know, why don't we just instead mixing the oils at home and bringing them here? Let's mix them on site.
Yeah.
And now we got essential oils and somebody's walking down the road. You know, I, I just want to avoid the potential of that type of situation where somebody, their initial intention just to have at the office.
Right.
But they got a two-year lease.
Office space in the business and then they're doing the business. Yeah.
So maybe it's just something about kind of exclusively for our office and professional.
All would be worse.
You can prohibit the manufact, prohibit.
What we do is maybe not, maybe not sort of define professional, but say what would, what wouldn't be allowed in there.
Well, professional office space would be, I mean, that would be different than any type. It wouldn't be a medical office. It couldn't be retail. Wouldn't be wholesale. It wouldn't be manufacturing. It wouldn't be industry, light industry. It wouldn't be any of that. It'd be professional office space, which could be an architect, engineer. I mean, a doctor's office does not have, that has no patients.
If you word it that way, they wouldn't have to come back.
It is professional office space to me is pretty clear.
Well, is it? Because they're talking about allowing a masseuse in there. So are they going to be doing massage therapy in, in the space?
Yes.
Now that's not, I would not consider that to be a professional office space. That's.
Well, that's a licensed profession. I, I would, I actually do consider that, that professional space. It's quiet, very low traffic, skilled, highly skilled.
I'm not saying that they are professional. I'm just saying, in my mind, when I conjure up professional office space, I'm not thinking that somebody's doing massage therapy on, on site.
Yeah.
But that's my context of professional office space. And that's what we're just trying to, like, that, I think, is a reasonable thing to have in that space. I don't think it's going to bother anybody. So we got to come up with wording that allows that, but stops some of the other things that could happen by loosely interpreting that.
Right.
Yeah.
So would somebody like a therapist be acceptable as a professional office space? Is that? Well, if I, I think of the Washburn building. You know, they've got Edward Jones, they've got a therapist, they've got several different professional offices that are in that building, I think, which is similar, I think, what you'd be doing. So we.
How do we describe that?
I think there's a real incentive for, for someone who's put, you know, a huge investment in something. If you have a vacant building, there's less incentive for someone to, to try to have professional offices. But once you've built it out for professional offices, we have a huge incentive to keep it that way. Keep the tenants and. So it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's kind of a way of, I mean.
Well, does the permit ride with the owners or does it ride with the building?
Oh, as written, it rides with the landing.
And I think we. We want it to ride.
You might not always own it.
Yeah, but a future, I mean, a future buyer, yeah, a future buyer would also likewise say the value in this building is as office space. There's no loading dock. I can't get a truck in here. I, you know, I'm not manufacturing. I mean, it's not a prime candidate for manufacturer.
Which almost sounds perfectly reasonable, but nobody here knows what the future's going to bring. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to come up with a good wording that's as clear as we can make it as to what the intent is. But, but that's all, that's all I'm looking, that's all I'm looking to have. Something happens when in six years, I'm not sitting here being, you know, being lambasted for having not thought of these things five, six years ago. So I'm asking all my questions now.
We're done, right?
I mean, it is, this is not beacon, this is not a neighborhood that abouts beacon fields. You know, it's not a dense, tightly knit, small lot neighborhood. Literally that land, the recreational land is prohibitive by covenants to be sold and developed. So our neighbors are really for that building, hundreds of yards away.
What if we word it, say, could rent it out as office, office space without coming for the zone board?
That'd be. That'd be
Yeah, we'd give a big relief. Everything you've done in first class.
That would be good for us.
Yeah, then if we want to put something else there, then we go
Meet again?
Go back to.
No, no, I I think that's, I think that kind of summarizes it without going, it's it's meant to be office space that.
A lot of role, with a lot of role blocks.
So looking looking at the previous permit that we granted, the applicant shall adhere to the site plan. Hours of operation shall be Thursday, special program. A special permit approval shall only apply to the tenant US Department of Agriculture. So I I'm assuming that would need to that that particular stipulation would need to be modified if we're gonna make it and not include them in the limitation of, so I'm just, I'm just trying to go through the previous.
Yeah.
The previous.
That's good.
That's right. And then any changes of tenant. So if we take three and four and and we do those.
Right, Peter, would you be so kind as to let me see what you just said? I don't think that's the stuff.
Well, you know, what I what I'm doing that we is re- rereading the previous deal that we granted.
Yep.
This is item one, the applicant shall adhere to the site plan data, or they say that with here, you know, here to the document provided today. The hours of operation shall be normal business hours Monday through Saturday. I think we just, I think we just need to repeat this so there's no confusion. That we're not, we're not changing anything that was before. A special permit pool shall apply to to the the all four hundred, four thousand four hundred square feet. Because three is the special permit shall shall only apply to the tenant US Department of Agriculture and whatever other tenants. So that's three and four. So we're gonna eliminate three and four and create a new statement saying that it applies to all forty four hundred square feet of space. And then the applicant shall, right, I'm assuming items five, the applicant proposes to pitch drainage for sheet foam, assuming that got, got.
Yes.
The applicant shall separate parcels four dash six and four dash four through the approval of a non-required A and R plan. I take it that was accomplished.
I'll say it.
And then the applicant shall submit a revised site plan to the Department of Planning and Development within thirty days and approval, and then ninety days it'd be requirement for ninety degree parking space. I take it that items five, six and seven.
Yes.
Were accomplished. I take it they were brought.
Yeah, that's correct. They were all.
So basically, if we take items one, two, and then repeat those, and then three and four, we blend into one statement. So this this special permit shall apply to to the four, the total of forty four hundred square feet of space within the within the building.
In that way, they don't have to come back. Leave by leaving out.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think we can stipulate it as professional.
This is office, office spaces is is.
Now, when we remove number three, does that remove the professional office space?
Maybe we we maybe we need a good point, that we include that forty four hundred square input professionals before forty four hundred square feet or forty four hundred square feet of professional office space.
Um, so apply the, will apply to the forty four hundred square feet space within the building for use as professional office.
Space, yeah. Well, the other.
We still, I think we still have to add something, we still have to put the, you know, any change. Well, it's actually that all, it does automatically default that if they want to use something other than professional office space, they have to come back.
Yes, it's automatic.
I
Or even in addition to the building.
Anything. That'd be, that that makes total sense.
This is just about the ability to quickly guard your tenant.
Yeah.
That's what we're really talking about here, isn't it? Having to jump through burning hoops to to guard a tenant.
And in ten years' time, if USDA says no, they can find another professional of somebody else to come in as professional office without having to come back.
We don't have to stipulate that, oh, you know, guys, we'd love to have you, you'd love to be here, but we gotta, you know, present.
How how many people does the USDA have in the office right now?
Uh, well, they're they're kind of in the, they don't move quickly. It's kind of a big furniture was ordered a couple of months ago. It's arriving in July, July. They have a proxy, I mean, it's hard to say because there's some people out in the field, there's some people that both are down in Hampshire and that they're in the state office and then have three days, you know, in Franklin County. It's kind of in the ten range, you know, give or take. So relatively low occupancy, but honestly, like you could, if you had a call center, it would, they don't exist anymore. You could max, max, max it out, I guess, to thirty, thirty-six people by code, but that that's probably not, you know, likely.
Any other, any other comments you should?
I don't think so. I think we're honing in here and
So make a motion, motion to.
Oh, I don't think I could.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion
Language, the motion.
To amend the previous special permit granted to address to seven, to fifty-nine Mongu City Road, to be amended as follows. We will repeat, I I mine items one and two as stated, and we will remove items three and four and amend them to say that it, I didn't, I only started at the apply the forty four hundred square space within the building for use as professional office space.
Is that sufficient for your purposes?
Yes, okay.
And and since the additional conditions that were on the original special permit have been fulfilled.
Yeah.
They will, they don't need to be on this.
That's right.
Yeah. I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can.
About that.
Everything you've both done in this town is first class. Give you a credit.
Hey, well, where's the time go? I thought that you guys were before us like ninety days ago.
Wait, April, what? How is it this year? Maybe this is already done here. I gotta. One's got more green than a beer.
Who's older?
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
So, thank you guys.
Thank you guys.
It's really very helpful.
You're good with the, what, someday waiting for you and
Yes, that.
You'll hook up with Eric.
And then we'll we'll record that as well, right? We, all right, well, we'll like.
It'll be, it'll be re-typed up, fourteen days I have to type it up and get the board to sign it and bring it to the city clerk.
Yeah.
He'll get a letter saying all that and when the appeal period starts and ends.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Have a good night.
Thank you.
I want these back? Not all received.
I don't need them back, but I'll just keep one as a record or you're welcome.
Yeah, we have one to go.
I have one for the right.
We have one to record.
Okay.
I I guess we do have minutes to improve. We need to move a couple of the meeting dates to
We do, yeah. So do we want to move our vote to continue to the continuance first?
Deal with minutes after.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did find them in my, I just have them in the wrong file. They came earlier.
Does this need to be put forward as two separate decisions, or can we just do a single this one for this date, this one for this date?
They they spell individual votes, so there'll be
Okay.
Three votes.
Three?
Fifteen Art Street, regular special permit. Then the appeal for fifteen Art Street.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Thirty-eight Haywood.
Each one of those, even though two of them are happening on the eleventh, it needs two votes for either purpose.
Thing separate.
Yeah.
Even though we're not even talking about at the same time.
Do you want me to start making some motions?
Sure, please.
All right, so I move to continue the special permit meeting regarding fifteen Art Street to July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I'll second that. Now, do we, you don't need to have a comments or anything on this, right? I just want to make sure we're doing it right. Okay.
And what's your second one?
Uh, do we just vote on that before the second?
Yes, yeah.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I also move to continue the appeal meeting regarding fifteen Art Street to July eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move to continue the public hearing for the appeal of thirty-eight Haywood Street to Monday, July first, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
I know it's obvious.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't mean to interrupt. Sorry. So I just want to make sure before I sign off at this meeting. So any matters related to fifteen Art Street have now been continued to July eleventh, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. At the same time, six forty-five?
Uh, the meeting starts at six thirty. There will be a special permit application before that, so on that. So it'll be, let's see now, yeah, six forty-five.
Okay, can I ask why it's being continued? Why is it not being held today?
By request of the, by request of the attorney Jacob Morse.
Okay. All right.
Actually, no, no, that, no, that was thirty-eight Haywood. Never mind. Do you talk of fifteen Arch? By request, by request of the business owner Jay Hayden.
Okay. Did he give a recent or no?
That he would be out of, out of town at that time.
All right, thank you. I'll be back.
Twenty-seven.
Sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
Yep, bye.
Bye.
Prove up the minutes of the meeting.
Want to make a motion to approve the minute?
So move.
Do you have the sixteenth and the thirty? Yeah, we're for both of those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who seconded?
I second. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, I think I don't think we ran into the business, right?
There's no, it's some marijuana place, right?
Yeah.
There's no missile, there's, make a motion for adjournment.
We have continued on this.
On favor?
Aye, somebody gonna say aye.
Okay, six Art Street will be on the twenty.